As we remain standing, if you would recite the Kids at Hope pledge, please.
As an adult and a treasure hunter, I am committed to search for all the talents, skills, and intelligence that exist in all children and youth. I believe all children are capable of success, no exceptions.
Thank you. You may be seated, and I'm going to ask my board members if we'd like to go down so that we can enjoy the entertainment from our Parkway Elementary students. Ready? Ready? Oh. Stand, hands down. You guys ready?
Think of the fellow man, lend him a helping hand.
Put a little love in your heart.
You see it's getting late, oh please don't hesitate.
Put a little love in your heart. And the world, and the world will be a better place. And the world, and the world will be a better place. For you, for you and me, and me. You just wait, you just wait and see.
But the day goes by and still the children cry.
Put a little love in your heart.
If you want the world to know, we won't let hatred grow.
Put a little love in your heart. And the world, and the world will be a better place. And the world, and the world will be a better place. For you, for you and me, and me. You just wait, you just wait and see.
Take a good look around, and if you're looking down.
Put a little love in your heart.
I hope when you decide kindness will be your kind.
Put a little love in your heart. And the world, and the world will be a better place. And the world, and the world will be a better place. For you, for you and me, and me. You just wait, you just wait and see. Put a little love in your heart. Put a little love in your heart.
What a smile you had on your face doing that. Want to do like one or two more? Go ahead. Come on. Smile. Nice smile. Excellent. Great. Fabulous job. What about it, audience? I want to know how long you've been playing drums?
Started this year.
This year?
Yeah.
I'm impressed. How about you?
Since I was two.
Since you were two. Wow. So does that mean you're going to follow the playing the drums into a career? Maybe so. How about the rest of you? How long have you been playing?
This year?
This year? Since summer? Well, you enjoyed it, didn't you? Great. And all of you, your song was beautiful, and you know what? The world is a better place because you all are in it, and you shared your talents with us tonight. What do you like most about singing in the choir?
That you get to be in front of everybody and to show that your power of singing, that you're really good at it.
Did you look right up there? See? Look right up there. You really are in front of everybody. Yeah. Everybody looks at you. You're exactly right. Yes. And what do you like most about singing? How about you?
Hmm?
What do you like most about singing?
How everybody gets to hear you, and at the end, everybody claps.
Another group that needs to be clapped for, if you are a parent, grandparent, friend, family member, Parkway family member, would you please stand so that we might appreciate you? This is the best part of our meetings, when we get to enjoy the talents of our students. So thank you for each of you for sharing your students with us. And as you're, and thank you, we've done a phenomenal job with this group. Thank you so much. We really appreciate you being here tonight. Okay. As they're filing out, Mr. Swig, I'd love for you to come up here and talk to us for a moment as well. Come here. That was just a beautiful, beautiful rendition. How long have you been singing?
I have been singing most of my life. I actually didn't start singing for like myself. I never like applied it until high school, around ninth grade.
Okay. And how does that ability tie into your academic life?
It ties heavily into my academic life. I don't go a day where I don't want to sing. And if I get to sing that day, I know I've completed that day, and I know I can achieve more because of it.
And what are your aspirations for the future?
I wish to move to New York, and I wish to perform on Broadway, or somewhere that I can enjoy myself and the talents that I've built.
Well, we look forward to seeing you on Broadway. I look forward to shaking your hand at graduation in a few months. Thank you so much for sharing your talents with us tonight. Everybody, Mr. Swig. Do you have relatives with you here? Relatives with you? Mom and your niece? Let's hear it for mom. and approval of the renewal for the charter Renaissance Charter School of St. Lucy Incorporated. Are there any in the audience that wish to speak to this issue tonight? Seeing none come forward, Mrs. Yost will receive your recommendation.
Yes, ma'am. I recommend the board approve the Renaissance Charter, the Renaissance Charter Schools' request for renewal of charter as presented, please.
Board members, we have received the recommendation. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Dr. Mills, second by Mr. Ingersoll. All in favor, please say and manually vote. Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. All registered, Mrs. Harrison? Okay. We will then now move to our special orders of business. Madam Superintendent?
Yes, ma'am. The first item on our special orders of business is our state winners for the Florida Stock Market Challenge, and we have Assistant Superintendent Carrie Patrick coming forward to present a few accolades.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost. Great news has traveled through the communication pipeline, and on behalf of Janelle Yost, our Superintendent, and Mr. Tim Norfleet, our Social Studies Curriculum Lead, I'm very pleased to highlight six of our shining stars this evening. Under the leadership of their celebrated teacher, Mrs. Shirley Helton, students at Fair Lawn Elementary participated in the Florida Stock Market Challenge. This is a 12-week competition involving buying and selling stocks with others throughout the state of Florida. Using their skills in mathematics, reading, and writing, students researched, calculated, and invested their funds in order to make a profit in today's stock market. They learned a great deal about the world of finance as they bought and sold stocks with their $100,000 portfolio. The students who I'm about to recognize swept the state. They took first, second, and third place recognitions. So I invite Ms. Shirley Helton, their teacher, to please join us as we celebrate her student's success this evening. Taking first place, we have a team comprised of Jake Patrick and Val Magdaleno. Could you please come forward? They are exercising their well-rounded skills. They are participating in an athletic event this evening, but we certainly want to celebrate what they have done. Congratulations. Second place in the state's competition, we have Colt Kriski and Connor Gillard. Please come forward. And rounding out the sweep of the state, we have third place Hunter Holmes and Andrea Esparza. And as always, we have our parents and our teachers that have also supported our children, so if you could please stand and be recognized.
Thank you, Ms. Patrick and Ms. Helton. It's nice to have Mrs. Helton returning week after week for our board meetings. We appreciate that. Our next order of business is our Treasure Coast High School Girls Basketball Team Championship recognition, and we'd like to ask the Athletic Director from Treasure Coast High School, Mr. Dan Como, to please come forward at this time.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Madam Superintendent, I would like to bring up a group of quiet young ladies to join me here on the floor. Just don't ask them to play you in basketball. Ladies, can you come on up? Gabrielle Bather, Haley Powers, Abigail Jimenez, Alexandria Colbe, Alex Jean, Alexis Jean, Evelyn Sagner, Rosemary Julian, Justine Colbe, Alexis Sakato, Natasha Peraza, Alexis Romano, Jade Visser, Savannah Pellic, Yasmin Queen, and Asia Jones. I would also like to introduce to you the coaching staff, Tay Bluntson, Coach Marvin Bratty, Coach John Piccarini, and Head Coach Roger Doreo. I also want to thank our administrative team who's out there. Could you please stand? Without their support, things at Treasure Coast in the Athletics Department would be much more difficult to do. What an outstanding job they do. Thank you. Just a little bit about our young ladies up here tonight. Their record was 21 and 7. They were the district runner-up for district in this, in this area of St. Lucie County. They were the FHSAA Region 3 2A champions. They were the FHSAA state runner-up, falling to Miami Senior High School, which is currently ranked 18th in the nation. The Titans currently are ranked second in the Florida Association of Basketball Coaches Poll, and they do have a combined GPA of a 3.2. So they not only take care of business on the court, but also in the classroom. On February 22nd, Night of the Stars, we had actually two nights of the Stars. We had one in St. Lucie County, and we had one in Lakeland. Not only were these girls there, but our new Teacher of the Year, Leani Ankil, who is with us tonight, is also our statistician and scorekeeper for the team. And also Terry Elias, who was the Employee of the Year, was also in Lakeland, and we appreciated the board and the committee for having us, I guess they call it FaceTime, between Lakeland and the, and the ceremony. It was, it was a great time. There was an aha moment at the state championship that, that I hold a little bit dear to my heart. After the game, both teams filed out into the parking lot, and as all good A.D.s would do, I stuck around in the parking lot to make sure everybody got in their cars and left peacefully and quietly, and it wasn't happening. Everybody was just hanging out, and quickly you could see there were no winners or there were no losers. Everybody was high-fiving each other and hugging and fist bumping, and it was evident that it was fierce competitors from both teams that just had an incredible night and gave it all 30 minutes prior to. And it was, it was one of those textbooks examples of what high school sports is really about. The sportsmanship was incredible. The girls had a great time. They conducted themselves as we in St. Lucie County would want them to, and, and it was just an outstanding evening, both there and I guess over in Lincoln Park. So ladies and gentlemen, the 2014 Lady Titan State Runner-Up Champions.
Music in Our Schools Month, and there is a proclamation and student recognition, recognition to be offered and facilitated by Assistant Superintendent Dr. Kevin Perry.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Yost, music and the fine arts have been a significant portion of every culture's education system for many years. Music and the arts surround daily life in our present-day culture, and an education without the fine arts is fundamentally impoverished and subsequently leads to an impoverished society. Music does something very important. It shapes the way our students understand themselves and the world around them. It allows for deep engagement with learning. It nurtures assets and skills that are critical to future success, including creativity, curiosity, determination, and motivation. Since its inception in 1973 and founded by the National Association of Music Education, Music in Our Schools Month has been celebrated in our district. This month-long event occurs each March, and its goal is to stress the importance of quality music education in our schools. Its primary purpose is to raise awareness of the importance of music education and for increasing awareness of the benefits of a high-quality music program for all children, and to remind citizens that school is where all children should have access to music. It also ensures that America's students have access to a comprehensive sequential music education taught by exemplary music educators. At this time, I'd like to introduce St. Lucie's exemplary music educators to you, and ask all of our music teachers in the audience to please stand. The theme for this year's celebration is "Music Makes Me." Participating schools have various activities that help showcase the talents of the students and their teachers, creating videos, designing posters, taking music field trips. Schools have many activities that celebrate music in our Schools Month. Furthermore, music is a regular part of our curriculum, where students study music history, instruments and composers, and make connections to other academic areas. Just this past week alone, we had, just this past, this week coming up, we'll have about 1,200 students participate in the Music Performance Assessment, which is the FCATs for music students. And I'm proud to say that I can assure you that 95% of them will score at least an excellent or superior rating. Furthermore, over 120 elementary students participated last Tuesday in our annual All-Country Elementary Music Performance. As part of our county-wide celebration, I also asked teachers to have students to write a short paragraph or so to tell us why music is important to them. Here to share with us why music is important to her is Jewel Edwards.
Good evening, Madam Chair, School Board Members, and Ms. Yost. I am Jewel Edwards, an eighth-grade student at Lincoln Park Academy. I would consider myself a very active student in the arts program at LPA. I'm enrolled in the Superior-rated choral department, and I have also recently participated in the All-State Middle School Treble Choir. I also enjoy playing the piano. If you cannot tell by now, music is a very large factor in my life. Music involves so many academic subjects such as math, language, art, language, and history. Math comes in when you have to learn note values and time signatures. If you cannot tell by now, music is a very large factor in my life. Music involves so many academic subjects such as math, language, and history. Math comes in when you have to learn note values and time signatures. Language gets thrown in when we have to sing in Latin, German, and Spanish. History is involved when we learn about Antonio Vivaldi, Frederick Chopin, and Johann Sebastian Bach. But to me, music isn't about all of that. It's about being allotted the opportunity to interact with other cultures and different people. For example, at Allstate, I met other students from Ocala, West Palm Beach, and Orlando. I had the pleasure of meeting the incredible Robin Rieslana, Director of the Cincinnati Children's Choir. To add on to the academics and the exposure to various people, I have met peers that have absolutely nothing in common with me and have bonded with them at LPA. Music is a bond that unites people. Music is a key that unlocks the barriers of different cultures, generations, and ethnicities. To close, I would like to thank my wonderful chorus teacher, Mr. Amming, for teaching me a plethora of lessons and techniques involving music and music theory. I would also like to thank the School Board and its members for their continued support of the Choral Department's and its fine arts. Thank you.
Thank you, Jewel. In addition to local students and our local teachers, there are some national figures that have a lot to say about music and music education. I invite you to take a listen to what Boys to Men, Gloria Estefan, Patty Austin, and Harry Connick Jr. have to say about the importance of music at our schools.
What's up? We're Boys to Men.
How do we educate our kids so they have a fighting chance in today's world? We don't have to tell you that children face pretty tough challenges these days.
We adults need to go the extra mile to make sure our kids find something in school that really sparks their interest, like music. Teenagers who study music and arts tend to find tough science and math concepts easier to grasp.
It has to do with development of something called Spatial IQ, and music and creativity go together, too. We know from our own lives that teachers who appreciate creative thinking embrace our love of music.
So, help prepare your children for life. Encourage them to learn to love music.
Hello, I'm Faith Hill. You know the expression "practice makes perfect"? Well, maybe nowhere is that more true than in music. Music study is one of the most valuable ways that a student can spend time. A young person who practices and studies music reinforces teamwork, communication skills, self-discipline, and creativity, all the qualities that kids need to be successful in their other schoolwork. As parents, think about encouraging your children to try out several instruments at school until they find the one that really clicks. Talk to the school's music teacher about finding affordable lessons so your child can see his or her progress as time goes by. And please, don't forget that your kids all have an instrument that's free and sounds wonderful, their voices.
Hi there, I'm Gloria Estefan. One of the great things about music is how it brings people together. Kids like to hang out, listen to music, and talk about what's hot and what's not on the music scene. And playing instruments and singing provides a way for young people to get together and interact in a cooperative and respectful way. Kids who play in school ensembles understand that every part has to work together for the result to be the magical art called music. Your local school music program provides a golden opportunity for a child to experience the rewards of learning music. Why not pay a visit to the music teacher to find out what's going on? Get your kids involved with school music.
If you've ever been to a Gloria Estefan concert, you know that there are few stars who can match her presence, performance, and talent. The time Gloria first experienced the thrill of being on a stage performing for people was also one of the first times she learned to stretch her wings.
My fondest memory of music in school was when I was playing the clarinet. I played the clarinet from fifth to eighth grade in the school band. My mother was pretty strict and never let me go anywhere, but of course, since it was part of the school program, she allowed me to go to Tallahassee, the capital of our state here, on a competition with the school band. Of course, to me, this was incredibly exciting. It was the first time I was allowed to go out of my home without a parent. We had chaperones, but we went there, participated in a three-day program, and it was some of the most beautiful memories I have as a child.
Hi there, I'm Harry Connick Jr. Kids have a lot on their plates these days. It can be hard as parents to stop and think about how something like learning music now can help them in the future. Music helps kids because it's a performing art, and children need to learn to really perform well to succeed in society. Getting an 85% on a math test is pretty good, but hitting 85% of the right notes during a concert isn't good enough for most music students or their teachers. A special kind of practice and preparation goes into the discipline of performing music, and it helps kids perform better in all areas of their lives.
Want to know one of the best ways to help kids do better in school? Hi, I'm Patty Austin. I visit a lot of schools, both at home and when I'm on the road, and I hear too many students say, "School's boring." And I say to them, "What about music class?" You know, learning music opens up the mind like nothing else. Performing in a school music ensemble is fun and challenging for kids. It encourages creativity while instilling self-discipline, and learning music even develops something called Spatial IQ, which helps students tackle the challenges of other subjects like math and science. Some night this week, sit down as a family and play your kids some music you really love. Then listen to what your kids like and compare notes. Even better, sit down at the piano and sing some songs together. Help your kids learn to love music.
A PSA brought to you by the National Association for Music Education. March is Music in Our Schools Month.
The group Alabama recorded these words. "Oh, I believe there are angels among us, sent down to us from somewhere up above. They come to you and me in our darkest hours to show us how to live, to teach us how to give, to guide us with the light of love." In St. Lucie County, the music teachers believe that we have this dynamic duo that have served as angels among us for many, many years. They have supported, took on the role of supporting music for many years, and we'd like to thank them for their continual support in guiding us and continuing to help the music programs in St. Lucie County flourish. They already have a very busy job, but this dynamic duo stepped up in the midst of that to continue to assist. The dynamic duo just happens to be Jay Stewart and Sheila Reese. Mr. Stewart, Ms. Reese. For many years, we were absent of a music supervisor, and somebody knew that there was something that needed to be done to support those wonderful music teachers in the persons of Jay and Sheila, and we appreciate them for all of their many, many years of support in answering my thousands of questions. Thank you, thank you. Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Jay, for flying back. The St. Lucie County School Board has a rich and storied history of supporting the arts. In doing so, music and music education is important to the curriculum for all students. At this time, I'd like to introduce to you Mr. Matthew Boswell to present the Music in Our Schools Month proclamation. Mr. Boswell is the Teacher of the Year for Fort Pierce Central High School, where he is the Director of Bands. He is also one of the three finalists for this year's Teacher of the Year. Mr. Boswell.
Proclamation for Music in Our Schools Month 2014. Whereas music is a universal language that speaks to all people, and whereas "music makes me" is the 2014 theme of the National Association for Music Education, and whereas the study of music contributes to the development of young people through heightened skills in listening, reading, self-expression, and creativity, and whereas the study of music is basic to a complete education and provides a competitive edge for successful educational reform while engaging students in individual and group activities which develop creativity, problem-solving, and critical and evaluative skills, and whereas music education helps students acquire skills in the production and performance of music as well as gives them an understanding of history and culture, and whereas music and other arts significantly enhance the morale and quality of the school environment, and whereas music programs should be maintained and improved for all students regardless of their socioeconomic status or their abilities. Now, therefore be it proclaimed that the School Board of St. Lucie County endorses the observance of the month of March as Music in Our Schools Month in St. Lucie County, Florida, as an opportunity to support the purposes and practices of music education, encouraging teachers, parents, students, and all citizens to participate. In testimony whereof, the Chairman of the School Board of St. Lucie County and the Superintendent of Schools have hereon to subscribe their names in the city of Fort Pierce, Florida on this 11th day of March 2014.
Madam Superintendent, we respectfully request that you recommend to the School Board the adoption of the proclamation for Music in Our Schools Month 2014.
Absolutely, Board Chair. I certainly recommend the adoption of the proclamation for Music in Our Schools Month, the month of March. Second?
Hi.
Hi.
Aye.
Thank you. As we continue Music in Our Schools Month celebration, we'd like to recognize some very talented students with the Music Spotlight Award for their outstanding performance and selection into some very elite organizations. All of these students pass a very rigorous and highly competitive audition process where they are required to demonstrate musicianship, rhythm and tonal proficiency, music theory, and artistic expression. Acceptance into these elite groups is a direct result of their talent, dedication, musicianship, and their accomplishments of these individual students and the hard work of their dedicated teachers. At first, we want to recognize Mr. Austin Swink. He's a senior at Centennial High School. He sang the National Anthem for us tonight, but Austin just recently participated in the 2014 All-American High School Honors Program Series at Carnegie Hall. One of our middle school students that participated in an All-State Middle School Honors Band is Maria Blaskiewicz from Southern Oaks. Also participated in the All-State Middle School Honor Band from Forest Grove, Haley O'Brien. From Lincoln Park Academy, participated in the All-State Middle School Treble Choir, Danielle Palina. Also from Lincoln Park Academy, participated in the All-State Middle School Treble Choir, Donald Zoll. In addition, from Lincoln Park Academy, the young lady that spoke to us tonight about why music is important also participated in the Middle School Treble Choir, Jewel Edwards. From Central High School, participated in the All-State High School Honor Band, Aleah Fleury. From Lincoln Park Academy, participated in the 1112 Symphonic Band, Jennifer Ketchum. From Lincoln Park Academy, participated in the All-State High School Women's Choir, Kaylee Kayla Lorden. From Centennial High School, participated in the All-State Women's Concert Chorus, Carissa Brunel. And from Lincoln Park Academy, in the All-State High School Concert Choir, Amber Pennock. And from Lincoln Park Academy, in the All-State 1112 Symphony Orchestra, Amanda Grahousey. Finally, I'd like to recognize these students' teachers from Centennial High School, Shirley Lyons. From Southern Oaks Middle School, Joanne Kinder. Forest Grove, Bradley Esaw. Lincoln Park Academy, George Ramming. Lincoln Park Academy, Jason Albert. And Lincoln Park Academy, Jennifer Caffaletti. Teachers, would you please come up for our photo? And School Board Members, thank you again for your continual support of music. May the music always play on.
And I believe we have several of the parents of these very talented musicians in the office, in the audience. If you could stand at this time, please. Parents of the students we just recognized for their musical talent. Thank you. You know, usually Dr. Perry has two board meetings, so he spreads out his recognition for Music in Our Schools Month, but we don't have a second board meeting this month, so we thank Dr. Perry for the recognition of our students and our outstanding programs throughout the district. The next order of business is recognition of outstanding first-year teacher, and we invite Executive Director of the Education Foundation, Mr. Jim McKenzie, to the podium.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost, thank you very much for this opportunity to publicly thank and acknowledge our outstanding first-year teacher. As you heard earlier this evening, she was doing what any good teacher will do, gave up a possibility of recognition and went on with her students, with her team, to the championship basketball game in Lakeland. And we're certainly very pleased to announce that Leilana Ankil was chosen as the Outstanding First-Year Teacher of the Year in St. Lucie County. And Leilana, if you want to come forward. Leilana, we wanted to make sure that you received the proper recognition for all of the hard work that you put in as, your description, a new-generation teacher. We want to thank you so much, and on behalf of Seacoast National Bank, our sponsors for the outstanding first-year teacher, we're certainly very pleased to recognize you. We had lots of other things for you, however, your mother was not leaving without them. So Mom has them, and again, we are very thankful that you are chosen in St. Lucie County to be a teacher. Thank you.
during Night of the Stars, so this was wonderful. Thank you to all of you for coming out to celebrate this outstanding first-year teacher. We have special thanks and recognition for two very special staff members. Michelle Jurgert, if you could present those for us, please.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost, tonight I bring before you two very special employees that we would like to give special thanks and recognition. One, it's very most important, really great that we're recognizing her this evening because it's music in- and went on with her students, with her team, to the championship basketball game in Lakeland. And we're certainly very pleased to announce that Leilana Ankil was chosen as the Outstanding First-Year Teacher of the Year in St. Lucy County. And Leilana, if you want to come forward... Leilana, we wanted to make sure that you received the proper recognition for all of the hard work that you put in as, your description, a new-generation teacher. We want to thank you so much. And on behalf of Seacoast National Bank, our sponsors for the outstanding first-year teacher, we're certainly very pleased to recognize you. We had lots of other things for you. However, your mother was not leaving without them. So Mom has them. And again, we are very thankful that you are chosen in St. Lucy County to be a teacher. Thank you.
All of your students would not have been present in the auditorium at Lincoln Park during Night of the Stars, so this was wonderful. Thank you to all of you for coming out to celebrate this outstanding first-year teacher. We have special thanks and recognition for two very special staff members. Michelle Jurgert, if you could present those for us, please.
Madam Chair, Board Members, Superintendent Yost, tonight I bring before you two very special employees that we would like to give special thanks and recognition. One, it's very most important, really great that we're recognizing her this evening because it's Music in Our Schools Month. And we would like to recognize Christine Hill, who is a teacher at Palm Point K-8. And she actually sent out an email to recognize all the music teachers and tell them thank you for helping her put together and coordinate the all-county chorus, which includes all the elementary students, over 100 elementary students, in a chorus to sing for our Night of the Stars. And she has coordinated this effort, not going to say too much here, I'm sorry, a little bit off on my notes. But her recognition comes from Ms. Juanita Wright, who specifically wanted to thank her for coordinating this effort each year and her dedication to the St. Lucy County students. Ms. Christine Hill, she says that you are truly amazing. We'd also like to recognize Ms. Narvelene Lucas, who is the dean at Westgate K-8. Got a very long letter expressing their admiration over Dean Lucas. Specifically, what was said is that she is an indispensable part of Westgate. Dean Lucas is a strong proponent for parental and community involvement. This recognition actually comes from a parent who wants to say that you have truly inspired her to be actively involved at Westgate K-8, and that you have inspired her son because he says that you built the cafeteria. And when the mother asks, "Well, how do you know she built the cafeteria?" His response was, "She knows everyone and everything about the cafeteria, and she makes sure that we are all okay and that we are eating in there." Ms. Lucas.
At this time, just a reminder for those of you in the audience that if you wish to be an unscheduled speaker tonight, there are forms at the back of the room. You just need to fill out and get to Mrs. Harrison before the beginning of our business meeting. This time, we'll have our CTA report. Ms. Tillman, welcome to the podium.
Madam Chair, School Board Members, Superintendent Yost, I really would just like to say, you know, it's a mighty fine day to be employed at St. Lucy County with all this Music in Our Schools Month and all the talented people that we have in this district. It is just truly amazing. But I did sit, and I wonder, how do you measure this on the framework? What design quality do you put all this good stuff in? Because it is just so phenomenal to have so many dedicated people here in St. Lucy County. And when it comes to my people of the arts, I'm always saying they're so very focused. It's kind of like they channel in on what they want. They don't see anything else beyond that. And they are sometimes my most energetic and innovative people that I continue to work with each and every day. But I would like to say that we are very appreciative of our collaborative continued conversation. We've been able to make strides with our communication with the school district, and it is a good feeling. That's why I say it's a mighty fine day to be in St. Lucy County, to be among people that even though you may have differences, you can still come back and take a deep breath and says, "Okay, let's try it another time." So I know we only have one school board meeting this month. We are preparing for spring break. So I would just like to recommend everybody take a deep breath, and knowing that when we come back, we in for the long haul. But don't forget, this is the legislative session. It is going on. Don't sit down and do nothing because everything that happens impacts each of us. Whatever capacity that you're in, a parent at home, a bus driver, cafeteria worker, administrator, classroom, teacher classroom, support staff, whatever it is, when the legislator's up there, when it impacts education, it impacts all of us. Don't sit back and not be an activist for yourself. We all have to advocate for public education. Public education is the equalizer for all of us, having an opportunity for all of our children to be successful. So that's our future. For me, that's my investment. And I suggest to each of us, remember, our children are our investment for the future. We have to invest in them. But by investing in them, we have to take those steps to look at those bills that have been filed. Look at how it impacts you. And as I say, people, look at how it impacts your family, your paycheck, all those things that are out there. Don't sit back. I can't urge us enough not to be advocates for ourselves. If you don't, who else will? So it's going on now. Today I was listening to, they were talking about children, society dealing with the funding of different things, talking about some mental health things. And I tell you, every day something is continuing to happen, especially when it comes to mental health. We've had so many tragedies right here on the Tragic Coast that deals with the mental stability of so many children, families, our coworkers, our peers. I mean, and all of us got something going on in our families. We may not acknowledge it, but everybody got something that's going on that we would like to do better at, people being able to manage themselves, manage their health. But as I stated earlier, we do need to look at those bills. We do need to watch it carefully because there is a move, in my personal opinion, to destroy public education. And with that, we have our children that are coming up who are being provided through the different venues to support some of the after-school programs. All that's about our kids. It's about our community. And we have to do something. We have to be the voice for the voices. So I wish you all a rest of spring break. Go to Tallahassee if you can. Go sit on some of those doors. But walk the Capitol, walk back and forth through the Capitol. Go knock on the doors. We have people that we have elected here on the Tragic Coast. You know what? We're paying their salaries. We need to go. Don't sit down and don't do anything. Because I'm quite sure if you tell somebody, "Come on, go with me", somebody will ride with you. But you do need to do something. So I just can't encourage us enough. People at home, do something. Write. Somebody call someone. You can't sleep. Pick up the phone, email them. Send them so many emails that, you know, hey, sometimes we even turn it off. We send so many. But let's do it. We need to do it. But do our part. Don't not do something. This is an election year, so for the state of Florida, we got to do what we need to do to make sure we are supporting our own interests also. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Tillman. Any report from Ms. Vickers? Do you have a report tonight? No report. Okay. We then will move to the consent agenda. Board members, I have a motion to adopt the consent agenda as presented. Moved by Mr. Ingersoll, second by Ms. Hilsen. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Till we get our electronic... Okay, all right. Record then will reflect that the motion carried five zero. Board members, are there any items coming before us for vote that you need to declare a conflict with at this time? Hearing none. Madam Superintendent, we'll receive your recommendation.
I recommend the board approve a total of 28 consent agenda items, beginning with 8.1 through 8.3, 9.2 through 17.1, as presented. Item number 9.1 has been deleted.
Thank you, Madam Superintendent. Board members, are there any items that you wish to comment on? Ms. Hilsen? Number 15 for comment. Any items, board members, that you wish to have pulled and voted on separately? Hearing none. Ms. Hilsen, comment on number 15?
Just quickly to piggyback on President Tillman's comments, the compensation for the CTA, CWA, and CU, that I just wanted to thank our teams, negotiations, and I think it's a wonderful year. And I see just some really good things that are happening with this communication and this process. And thank our union team, as well as our team here at the school board office. There is a lot that goes into this, and I really appreciate the willingness to work in this fashion this year. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Hilsen. We have received the recommendation of the superintendent. Board members, do I hear a motion? Moved by Dr. Mills.
Second.
Second by Ms. Hilsen. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Have their vote electronically? Okay, wonderful. At this time, Madam Superintendent, we will move to the other business.
I recommend the board approve findings of fact, conclusions of law and penalty, and final orders, number 305 through 329, as presented.
Board members, we have received the recommendation. Do I hear a motion? Moved by Ms. Hensley, second by Dr. Mills. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five zero. Okay. Everyone has registered their vote electronically? Thank you. Madam Superintendent, time for your report.
Yes, ma'am. I had the pleasure of dining with six young people today during our learning lunches. There was representation from Windmill Point, Rivers Edge, Weatherby Elementary, Palm Point Elementary, Okamic School, as well as Dan McCarty. Those six young people, as well as their moms primarily, and teachers who brought them to the luncheon, had lots of information to exchange, including some feelings on their breakfast and lunch options. So we'll be sharing that with the food service department. We greatly appreciate the input of the young people and the six schools that were present today. Last week, I traveled to Dallas, Texas, to attend the comprehensive gang model training that was offered by the National Gang Center. And we had an opportunity, there were seven of us representing St. Lucy County, including the police chief, representation from the Office of Juvenile Justice, the Health Department, as well as the roundtable, and a young lady by the name of Shanique Maynard, who was a local attorney, that really took the initiative through her contacts in the federal law offices, to reach out to the National Gang Center and continue to investigate an opportunity for the team of seven to visit and participate in the training. As a result of Ms. Maynard's efforts, we were surrounded by approximately 10 districts across the nation that focused on the structure assessment, data-driven planning, suppression, and intervention strategies that we now will need to digest, as well as plan for in the future. Areas such as Pittsburgh, Pennsylvania, have been utilizing this comprehensive model since 2002, and their success is immense. And so we have learned a lot, gained a lot of knowledge from others who have implemented the training model in their locale. So there will be lots of planning ahead of us. That three-day conference was certainly not the beginning or the end of our work. The work is now beginning so that we can identify a plan, a structure, and even hire a program coordinator, as recommended by the center. So there will be lots of additional information forthcoming, and hopefully it will have a positive impact throughout the district and St. Lucy County. In closing, I'd like to mention that I will be in Tallahassee the final week of March. And so during spring break, I will be traveling there to meet with other superintendents, as well as legislators. Looking forward to that trip.
Thank you, Superintendent Yost. Mr. Harold, do you have a report this evening? We'll move to school board member reports, and Dr. Mills, we'll begin with you this evening.
Thank you, Chairperson Hawley. I just want to mention again that we're in the legislative session, and encourage our community to contact your legislators and let your voice be heard on the different issues. As our CTA representative Vanessa said, we have to look at the bills, and then we have to contact our legislators to let them know what we are in support of and what we're not in support of as a community. And it is important that we are advocates for ourself and our family and our community. So pick up the phone and call your legislation. Don't just look at the bills and hope for the best, but give them a call. I wanted to also congratulate the drama department of Fort Pierce Central. You know, we're in our Month of Music, our Month of, really, which is part of our performing arts. And they did an excellent job. I want to say thank you, as a board, to Mr. Smith, as well as Ms. Stewart, and Mr. Boswell, and the rest of the staff at Fort Pierce Central. They did their musical Broadway play, and if you didn't get to see it, you missed the real treat, entitled Little Shop of Horrors. There was a lot of laughter. And the skills of our young people, as Vanessa was saying, I'm absolutely amazed at the ability and the skills and the gifts and the talents that we have here in St. Lucy County. And we know that, and it's been said tonight, study after study shows, the correlation between the performing arts and student performance and academic achievement. So to have such a wide variety of talent in St. Lucy County is just a blessing. And it's a blessing that's hidden unless we come out and we support it as a community and bring our families and enjoy these productions, Broadway plays that are done so giftedly from our students. And with that being said, Lincoln Park Drama Production is our next high school theater performance, and it will be presented by our Lincoln Park Drama Department. The production is called Hunk, and it's a musical comedy about an ugly duckling. And this musical teaches us that it's okay to be different. And it also deals with bullying. So please bring your families out to see this production and help us, help our children to understand that it is wrong to bully, pick on another child because they may be different. So this really has a powerful meaning behind this drama, and the tickets are $7 for adults and $5 for students. I'm told that you can purchase a ticket either at the Lincoln Park Drama Room or 30 minutes before the show. And the show will be held Friday, March 21st. So put that down on your calendars. It should be a wonderful program that we can see with a real special meaning behind it. That's March 21st at 6:30 PM. Get there 6 o'clock if you want to get those tickets before the play begins. And, talking about performing arts and music, we have a district-wide musical, summer musical, that tomorrow will be having auditions at Fort... that tomorrow will be having auditions at Fort Pierce, I mean, not Fort Pierce, at Port St. Lucie High School's auditorium. Now, this musical is for all ages to be able to take part in if they are students here in our school district. They must attend a public school in order to be a part of this summer musical production. And as you know, if you know any children that are wonderful in acting, singing, or dancing, or whatever, let them come out and try for the district-wide summer musical. This year, the musical is entitled Cinderella. So that's something that we all know about and have always enjoyed that story. No experience is required, but the student again must currently attend a St. Lucie County public school. The auditions and the tryouts will be at 6:30, no, 6 o'clock. They will begin at 6 o'clock at Port St. Lucie High tomorrow. So have your student or your child there if you're interested in them trying out to be a part of the summer play. We also have the Family Reading Festival that will be taking place again. This is the fifth year, I believe. It will be held on a Saturday, April the 12th, from 10 a.m. to 2 p.m. at the St. Lucie County Reading Council's annual free family reading festival. And I've been there the last three years with my family. And I'm telling you, if you love books, you're walking into a book heaven by going to this festival. It is just something for everyone. The first 400 families at the gate will get a free goodie bag with a free book and the first 300 children will get free Met Stadium passes. And on a serious note here, I want to remind the students and the parents to be safe while you're traveling to your bus stops. There's been some noticing out there where students are walking with the traffic instead of walking facing oncoming traffic. If you're going to have to walk in the road, students, parents, remind your students, we want everybody safe. Remind them to walk where they can see all traffic coming toward them so that they can stay safe out there. And also, what sometimes what we see out there is that students are standing in the street. Do not stand in the street. Remind your students, parents, don't stand in the street. Stand on the grass while you're waiting for your bus. Stand on the sidewalk. Do not stand in the street because that is a safety hazard. So parents, please keep our children safe. Keep your children safe and remind them periodically what to do in order to continue to be safe.
Thank you, Dr. Mills. Mr. Ingersoll?
Yes, ma'am. I just want to thank all the schools that participated in this year's school fair. And every, every school that participated did a phenomenal job. And the Kiwanis Club, Downtown Sunrise Kiwanis Club will be participating and handing out checks our next meeting in April. And also, I want to congratulate some schools that participated and honestly have in mind on Saturday. We have quite a few that are moving on, particularly Lincoln Park and Moren Side Academy. Had quite a few teams that did really well. Wanted to say thank you for those people that supported that, that effort and they did a good job.
Thank you, Mr. Ingersoll. Ms. Hensley?
Well, I had the privilege of being in Tallahassee last week. It was, as always, an interesting experience. We did have the privilege, I was up there with the Florida Children's Council. There are seven independent children's services councils in the state of Florida, but we were joined by people from other entities like United Way Florida and several different groups. We had asked that our secretaries in our department has come to us as panels, instead of one-on-one, and they did. So we had the opportunity to talk to the Chancellor of Education, well, Secretary of Education now, Office of Early Learning, Persons with Disabilities, Department of Health, all those different entities, and watched them talk, I think sometimes for the first time, about some key issues. When we talked about healthy kids, we expanded their conversation to include pediatric, dental programs, and all mental health programs, both for families, for their families as well as for their children. So we had quite a lively experience and we actually had some legislators who joined us. And I don't think that they anticipated that they would be quizzed so heavily and not just applauded for showing up. So it was good. Department of Children and Families has a better understanding of concerns about children in foster care and protecting our children in a broader scope. So it was, as always, somewhat fascinating and somewhat frustrating, but I do think that was extremely worthwhile.
Thank you, Ms. Hensley. Ms. Hilsen?
Just one item I want to congratulate. Principal Todd Smith sent us all an email. He has at Fort Pierce Central, two finalists in the Gates Millennium Scholarships or Scholars Program, Omar Guerrero and Terrence McQueen. And they actually had a winner from Fort Pierce Central who won this award in 2012, Carmel Borjali. I hope I don't, that's close. But I think that's remarkable because as Dr. Mills had pointed out how important the arts are, both of these two students participated in the Little Shop of Horrors program that they had at Fort Pierce Central. So they're well-balanced students that perform with the arts and very well-read, it appears. This scholarship provides a great deal for these students if they do, with their education. So it's a wonderful award and I hope we have some winners from St. Lucie County from Fort Pierce Central.
Thank you, Ms. Hilsen. I would just like to add to all of you that I hope you take the spring break week and get some well-deserved rest and do something fun. Enjoy yourselves, enjoy your students. Everyone's beginning to have a bit of spring fever, so I think it's coming along just at the right time. I hope you all enjoy that. And just to add, I will be in Tallahassee next week as the board's delegate for the legislative body. So I will be there next week and not in the office. But the week after that, I hope you all have a really, really good spring break and come back refreshed and ready to finish out the school year on good note. At this time, we will bid good evening to our viewing audience. We do have three unscheduled speakers to come before us tonight. And the first one would be Ms.